Testing one, two, three. This will be the January 18th, 2017 City Council Regular Meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a regular City Council meeting in the City of Satellite Beach, January 18th, 2017, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join me in a moment of silence and a pledge. My pledge. Pledge allegiance to our, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, in a broad, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time we'll move on to Agenda Item Three, Citizens' Comments. This is for non-Agenda items. The floor is open. Hearing none. Close the Citizens' Comment. Move on to Council Comments. Councilwoman Gibson? Would you like to start?
Sure, I don't really have any comments.
Thank you. Dummey?
I just attended the Space Coast League of Cities meeting on the 9th. That's all I have.
Just a few things. I saw the new webpages up, coming along nicely. Looks good. Heard nice comments about that. I attended the Library Board on Tuesday, and they're gonna have their big book sale, annual book sale, coming up on February 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. They're pretty excited about that over there, obviously. I always like it, because every year when I do my donations, that's where I get rid of all my DVDs, school books, and all that stuff. I pile it all down there, which is nice. And I was at the Sampson's Island Working Board yesterday. They're gonna be having their open house on the 25th. And something that was new, which is showing here, they elected to put a few trail cams out there, and they've been slowly bringing back some of the pictures out there of the wildlife, coyote, raccoons, the owl amongst on Sampson Island.
They're great swimmers.
Yeah. So they're slowly coming around with that, working that out to post some of those on their Facebook page. Some of those should be out there soon. And that's it.
Chris, thank you.
I have nothing.
Thank you. I also attended the Space Coast League of Cities, saw the webpage today. They showed it to me. It's all really nice. And sidewalks are coming along pretty nice on A1A. We saw them on A1A. Seen quite a few of them. They look good. That's all I have to report. Any further? Further from Council? Good. This time moving on to Agenda Item Five, City Managers' Report. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. On January 29th, Rhythm in Motion Dance Showcase will be happening at the DRS Center. So you can see the competition dancers at two performances, one at 1:00 PM and one at 3:30 PM. All tickets raised for that will be assisting the dancers with competition fees. If you've ever seen them, they're really good. They're very good. On February 11th, we will be having our annual Cinderella's Wedding, and she gets married every year. And that's a children's party, and that will be from 2:00 to 4:00 at the DRS Center. It's very popular, very crowded event. On February 12th, the Satellite Beach Lions Club will have their fifth annual car show, which will be held from 10:00 AM till 2:00 PM at the DRS Community Center, and that's also a very well-attended event, if you have ever been to that. For informational items, I wanted to let you know that the control burn of the sports park preservation area was completed on Wednesday, January 12th. The mechanical removal part of it, so everything that's left will be removed mechanically, and that will occur six weeks from now, because they want some growths to happen, so they can make sure that it's, everything was burned correctly, and then they'll come back in and get the other stuff that's left over. And as you recall, a portion of the site was covered with a vine that's actually toxic if you burn it, so they didn't, that's the part that we're mechanically removing. Okay.
And you're mechanically removing the south portion by the library?
That's correct. We will be starting, now that we've had that finished, we'll be starting construction on the skate park at the end of the month. We had to wait also for St. John's permit. I think we're supposed to get that this week. And you'll see, the park will probably be closed next week when we start taking the fencing down. So we'll let you know. I'll email you to let you know that when you start getting calls about the skate park being closed. We do have, the Mayor's Fitness Challenge is going very well, way better than we ever thought. We now have, we originally went with the idea that we'd have an event every weekend during the 13-week period. Now we have an event every day during the 13-week period. So it's gotten very popular. We have the most people signed up in all the cities in Brevard County. And we're the smallest city, except for Indian Harbor Beach, I think. So that's pretty encouraging. The Mayor will be on a photo, like a photo op, and I think a billboard, actually, and his photo shoot is coming up. We all had a good laugh about that. We're still laughing internally, actually outwardly. So he is the face of the Mayor's Fitness Challenge.
He's a body.
Yes.
I had an ass for this.
You gonna wear a thong?
Mark is like this silent for Dudley. Okay, so we are live with our new website. We didn't, we haven't sent it out on Facebook yet, because we were working out some kinks on the, if you go to the old website address, we dropped the FL at the end of the website address. So right now, if you go to either one, you'll go to our website, and so that'll go for a while, until people get used to that. And Google picks it up to where it comes up, to the top. So we worked that out. We'll be advertising on Facebook to let everybody know that we have a new website. It's very, very well done. Suzanne did a great job. The team did an excellent job on that website. And we have a great company. They did a great job. Our online permitting is all functioning through the website. It's starting to gain some traction now, and so it's looking really good. We have clinic opening date now. It will be accessible and open to our employees by March 1st. We will be contacting other cities to try to get a grand opening date put together. We're gonna try to get that in a late afternoon, evening, early evening timeframe, and all the cities will be, that are participating, will be invited to attend the grand opening. So we'll let you know as we get that organized. And State Road A1A is moving along. We are now in the phase where they're moving into our city, so we'll be attending all of those meetings for the construction procedures. And now we are also talking about the next phase already, and paying, you know, starting to design the landscaping for the islands, and also starting to look at acquisition right away along the A1A area for the remaining sidewalk gaps that we have still. And that is all I have at this time.
Questions for City Manager? Courtney, thank you very much. The website is, great job. It's really nice. Very easy to maneuver through and looks great.
I think it really reflects our culture, too. I like the...
Is the address, cityofsatellitebeach.org?
Satellitebeach.org, now. It's Satellite Beach.
So you got rid of Florida.
Yeah, we got rid of the Florida.
Cityofsatellitebeach.org.
That's correct. Which is, was always confusing to people, because the satellitebeach.org used to go to the rec site. Because I think the rec department had the original website, and, right? Is that why we got that? I don't know. Well, regardless, it was always confusing to people.
Always went to the rec department.
So now the rec department, everyone has, we have one city website, and now the departments are reflected in the department section. It all has the same look, the same feel. All the staff can maintain it easily. It's well done.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we're gonna rearrange Agenda slightly, and we will move to Agenda Item 11, which is Discuss Take Action on the Purchase of Three Contiguous Properties for the Purpose of Stormwater Retention. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, that we, the staff has been trying to identify areas throughout the city to deal with untreated stormwater. The remaining areas throughout our city that have untreated stormwater situations, where the water just goes directly into the lagoon, and this area that we're talking about tonight is one of those areas. And unfortunately, the area that we're talking about is primarily public, so it's really our property, the DRS Center, that is where the water's coming from. So right now, we have a public use that's untreated, and it's going directly into an outfall in the lagoon. The outfall that we're talking about is on Jackson Avenue, and we have identified three properties in the corner of Jackson Avenue. And what, where the properties are is, there's, if you, for the benefit of the audience, if you know the little yellow building with the nice little shutters on the side, and it's currently vacant, we're talking about the vacant property that surrounds that building. So it's an L-shaped look to it. We have a Realtor on contract, or a broker, Caldwell Banker, Mike Jaffe's here tonight. He secured all three properties for us in a contract, and we have, in your agenda packet, the assignment of one, and then we have another contract that we'll be doing a simultaneous closing with Caldwell Banker the same day for the other property. One of the properties where, is, two contiguous properties, I'm sorry, are under one owner, and they're a total of .79 acres. This property owner has agreed to a $350,000 sales price, and the property is under contract with Caldwell Banker, and that property owner did agree to sign that property, so, or assign the contract to the city. The other property is .24 acres, and that, this is the property that is directly on Jackson, and that property owner has agreed to a $140,000 sales price, and it is under contract with Caldwell Banker, and we will be purchasing the property directly from Caldwell Banker the same day they will be closing on the property. The total acreage is 1.3, 1.03 acres, and the total price is $490,500. And we did receive comparable sales, pricing for comparable sales through Caldwell Banker. They did an analysis for us, as well as an appraisal for a different property, commercial property in the city, and it appears as though the pricing for comparable sales for commercial property is approximately $10.23, or $10.23 a square foot, and these properties are under contract for $10.95 per square foot. So we're in the price range. Mike Jaffe has negotiated the contracts for the city on our behalf, and we did outline the dates of the offers and the counteroffers, for your information. We are, as part of this, since the $491,000 that we are requesting exceeds the dollar amount in unrestricted reserves, we're asking for a $75,000 approval from the stabilization fund, which are committed reserves, to allow us to purchase the property. Part of our financial stabilization policy that we put in place three years ago was, if we accessed the stabilization fund, that we give you a strategy on how we would replace those funds. And we are expecting to be able to return the funds within the next two years, largely because we do have a proposal to sell another property that we own that will be coming before you, as well as another CRA payment through our reserves that's coming up next budget year. And then we also have incoming new construction projects, which are pretty substantial in size, and we know that we'll be able to put that money back in reserves at the same time as lowering your Meldra. So we are confident in that. We do, we do have to recognize that in our stormwater, and we did provide, our engineer provide, provided kind of an analysis of, and this is very preliminary, because we don't really want to spend a lot of money on engineering a project until you own the property. And he did provide kind of an idea of what it would look like in your pocket, and how much, and how they feel it would be in terms of significant. And they did feel that it would be a good project, that there was, it was a, you know, a good project to move forward with, and that the real, the real benefit here is that we would be treating, and substantially treating, the water that's currently untreated into the lagoon. And this would give us significant reduction in our nutrient loads, and it would also help us meet our TMDRs in the long term. So this is one of our last remaining areas in the city that have no treatment. We do believe that it's a good project to move forward with. We can get a lot of reimbursements and grants for the construction and things like that. We probably will not get a reimbursement on the land costs. We will try, but we might not. So I don't want to give you that false hope, but we do think we will be able to build back up the reserves pretty quickly.
Thank you very much. Questions from Council?
You know, this, this fits in so well with the goals that we've established on addressing the city's, not just current, but long-term stormwater issues. And, you know, we've been looking at doing something in this part of the city for a long time, and this definitely fits the bill. I also like the pocket part that David had kind of put into his report also, on what we might be able to do to, you know, use some of the property there as a place where people can go. Kind of like what we're doing on DeSoto also. I think this is a, is a great opportunity for us, and I'm glad that we're moving in this direction, because it's long been needed in that area. But in your report, it says 602 Jackson Ave. That should be Jackson Court, right?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. Yeah, it's on the west side.
Yeah, it's on the west side.
South Patrick.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel comments before we open it up for public?
I just have one question. Is, is the stormwater we're catching, is it just from the parking lot at DRS? Or are we gonna get some of that from Jackson Avenue and other areas?
There's a portion of it that does come from Jackson, but not, not a lot. A lot of Jackson is diverted across the school board site and down, but we will get the lower half of Jackson that's closer to the west side.
Even better.
Yeah, we did, we did, actually did a project that encompassed the public shopping center, the schools, and that's what takes care of most of Jackson.
Right. It could be expanded and made better, and, you know, those are some of the opportunities. I met with the school board today, and we actually talked about some of those opportunities together. But, but, and that would be a, like a small win, you know, some of those projects. The issue with our city is that we are so land constrained, so we keep doing little small wins. The problem is, we're not, you know, we won't be able to really make a reduction load impact until we do the big ones, and this is one of those big ones.
Further before opening up for public comment? At this time, open up Agenda Item 11 for public comment. Floor is open. Hearing none, back to Council. I think it's a great idea. I mean, we've been working on our stormwater almost before anybody with that, for boxes and a whole array of things, and as you and I have talked, we are running out of land, and it's gonna be pretty tough to do a lot of these projects if we don't act now, at least on the land side of it. So I think it's good. We have a way to pay it back, which I like, and, you know, with the sale, with the tax just passed, I think it shows people, 72% voted for it, that the environment's important. So I think it's a good thing. And Mike, thank you very much for your effort.
Appreciate it.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of three contiguous properties for the purpose of stormwater treatment and retention for a total amount of $491,500 and allow the use of $75,000 from the city's stabilization fund to purchase the properties.
Second?
I have a motion.
Jim?
I think you need to add to the motion that the Mayor be authorized to execute the assignment of the contract from CB, or with CBEs to assign the contract with the Erisaris, I think that's how you say it. And then also to execute the contract and addendum between CBEs and Satellite Beach that was with the packet tonight. There's one in the, in the packet, but it was modified to increase it to 141, because the original contract was written that the city would pay for all the closing costs, because the idea is, is the Realtor wouldn't have to pay anything out of pocket for what they're doing for the, obtaining the contracts. And when the, when a local, when a governmental entity is one of the parties, they can't pay the doc stamps on the deed, so basically the contract was increased. That's why it's $1,000 difference. So, so it's to execute the contract for 141 plus the addendum.
I will amend my motion to include the statements that the city attorney brought forth.
And I amend my second.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Further discussion from the Council?
You know, I just think what we're doing on DeSoto, and what we're doing on this project, has been monumental for our stormwater issues in the city. So I commend our staff for searching these things out and doing these projects for us.
Thank you. No further comments? Lenore?
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you very much. Mike, thank you very much.
Yeah, I have to say, we, you know, he was good. I don't know how he does it. I would pull my hair out if I was him, having to go back between me and the sellers constantly. So he did a good job.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item Eight, is the presentation of FY 2016-17 First Quarter Budget Report.
So I'll just preference by, back in 2013, when, you know, we decided as, when we presented why our reserves keep, you know, declining, was because Council really didn't know, and by the, and so at the end of the year, when the budget was over, they had no idea, because nobody was getting a budget report. So we instituted a quarterly budget report program, and, and this is really more for, you know, Councilwoman Gibson's benefit, but, so we instituted this program, and this is really just a report. There's no amendment that goes along, and we're just telling you where we are on the budget.
Good evening, Councilwoman Mayor. This is gonna be really quick. It's a brief overview of the quarterly report for the first quarter of the year, which ended December 31st, and the budget, updated budget document is in your packet. Just a quick overview, general fund highlights. The total general fund revenues collected to date at 1231 is just over $6 million, of which $5,299-ish is from Edulorm, Texas, and that's 85% collected thus far. General fund expenditures is just over $3 million. Briefly on the other funds, Community Services Fund, 21% expended, or 21% collected in revenues, 5% expended. Stormwater Utility Fund is 23% collected and 5% expended. And Law Enforcement Trust Fund is basically just for the banking fees and revenue, which we have to record both. Community Redevelopment Trust Fund revenues are 98% collected. That includes the TIF money from the county and from the city. Expenditures are 8%. Capital Assets Fund revenues are 10%, expenditures are at 14%. And most of that cost is actually just from debt service. We haven't really gotten into many of the projects yet, but we're getting ready to ramp up on those, specifically skate parks that Courtney's already mentioned. Health Insurance Funds at 22% and for revenues, and 14% for expenditures. Just a real brief overview. There's no necessary budget amendment at this time, but we are expecting to have one at mid-year, mainly due to Hurricane Matthew expenditures, and because of the addition of the new environmental program coordinator position that was approved at the last meeting. Then the mid-year report will give her a better idea of what we're looking at for the Since that's really brief, I wanted to give you a quick update on last year's financial overview for the audited statements. Where did we end up at the end of the year? At 9:30, 2016. Revenues collected is $10,421,180. Expenditures are just a little bit over at $10,468,561. This is the first year in a while that we had to take money from reserves to fund expenditures, and that's because we're on a real good track of establishing that stabilization fund. This is just kind of like an overview of the end of '14 to '15, and the end of '15 to '16, as far as reserves. At the end of '15, we were at $1,434,386 for total reserves, and at the end of '15 to '16, we're at $1,387,005. Looking ahead, city staff has completed field work with auditors. We're just basically waiting on the exuary for the pension, police and fire pension, and the general employee's pensions to come back, and then those will be complete. I'm saying we're gonna probably do it in March, although it could be February, but I don't want to promise that. We are finalizing a request for reimbursement to be submitted to FEMA for Hurricane Matthew expenditures, so we should be able to recoup some of the costs that we had spent on that disaster. As Courtney has already mentioned, new employee health clinic will be open March 1st, and the skate park renovation is getting ready to start, and civic center renovation is getting ready to ramp up in a little bit. Do you have any questions?
Question from Council?
And I just wanted to clarify, the $47,000 that we used for reserves was actually budgeted to use from reserves, so that wasn't an overspending, that was actually planned, this morning, surely.
Questions from Council? Okay. Thank you. At this time... Do you need a motion to accept the report? I don't think it, that's just a report. This time being an Agenda Item, Public Discussion for Agenda Item Eight is open. Hearing none, back to Council. Council questions for... Jennifer, thank you very much for the report, and we'll hear from you on the mid-year. Moving on now, we'll come back to Agenda Item Six. Discuss Take Action on Agreement Between the City of Satellite Beach and a Medical Director. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a typical agreement that we must have for ALS care through emergency, and basically, we provide an emergency medical service system, which employs paramedics that perform ALS services. So because of that, we have to have a medical services director, and we have this contract. It's just being currently renewed, so that's our recommendation. The cost for these services is $2,500 per year, and this is actually a budgeted line item, so we're just reading the contract.
Thank you very much.
Permission to authorize City Manager to execute an agreement for the Medical Director Services with John McPherson, MD.
Second?
Motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Discussion from Council? Hearing none. Agenda Item Six, open for public comment. Hearing a public comment, back to Council. Any further? Lenore?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tyler?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item Seven. Discuss Take Action on Renaming the Satellite Beach Dog Park in Honor of Former Councilwoman Lorraine Gott.
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall, Councilwoman Lorraine Gott, she not only, I, I don't know if I could adequately list everything she's done for the city, quite frankly, but not only as serving multiple terms as a councilperson, she also chaired a charter review committee, she's chaired numerous committees for code rewrites, things like that. But I think her one signature service to the city was not only just having the idea to do the dog park, but actually bringing it, she actually did plan and execute the dog park's construction, engineering, and every, everything, every aspect of it. She even designed the sign. So I think, as a tribute to everything she's done, even the grants that we've received, the applications she's submitted for, rewards that we received, all the writing she's done, the Beechcaster, writing articles for us, taking a lot of the, the pressure off staff, honestly, in doing some of those things for us. We think it'd be fitting to name the dog park after her and honor her for her service to the city, which has been over so many years. And that, it really would not have a big impact on costs. We believe that we can reconstruct...
We believe that we can reconstruct the sign to fit her name on it and a brief description of her service to honor her and have a ceremony to do that. And it would, it would be, we would be able to do that within our current budget. We would like to do it soon if possible, so we could get it done before we have to shut a lot of that area down for construction.
Thank you very much. Questions from council?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the renaming of the Satellite Beach Dog Park to the Lorraine E. Gott Dog Park.
Second? Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Any discussion? Here are none. This time, open up Agenda Item 7 for public.
Agent Paul E. Lorraine?
Yes.
E. Lorraine Gott.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Fine, citizen. I've sat through many, many council meetings. You all know that. I can't think of a more deserving individual to be honored than that Lorraine Gott. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Giff. Public comments still open? Here are no further public comment. Back to council. Any further discussion? Lenore?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Courtney, I know you'll get ahold of Lorraine for us and thank her for everything. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 9. Discuss, take action on Resolution 980. Jim?
Resolution number 980, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Florida, authorizing financing of property assessed clean energy for N-PACE improvements within Satellite Beach, authorizing the execution of limited purpose party membership agreement with Florida Resiliency and Energy District, providing for PACE provider levy of non-ad valorem assessments, third-party administration, financing agreements, and approval of PACE provider agreements, directing staff to evaluate additional PACE providers, establishing standards for evaluating additional PACE providers, directing staff to negotiate with additional PACE providers, directing staff to present future PACE provider agreements for city consideration, providing for severability and providing an effective date. So reading the Resolution number 980.
Thank you. Discussion from?
This is just another company, so, you know, competition is good, I think. So this will be the fourth company that is authorized to provide this service in the city.
I'd make-
Go ahead.
Oh, are they here? Oh, good. They're there.
Thank you.
They're here.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 980 and authorize the mayor to sign the limited purpose party membership agreement.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Osmer, second by Councilman Gibson. I'll tell you, there's a lot of people, more and more every day on solar and so forth. It is very interesting how many people have, you know, are doing it. And-
And this is a good opportunity. It's a, I mean, in some instances, like mine, I am actually an applicant. And we did that cost benefit of HELOC loan and this, and this actually came out to be a better deal for us. So, you know, it's a good, it's a good alternative.
Right. I think it's working good. Any discussion? Okay, at this time, open up for public comment Agenda Item 9.
Real quick, although I've been advised many times when you vote-
You got to state.
Yes, absolutely. My name is Mike Antile. I just wanted, so my company is Renovate America. We're the PACE provider. I just wanted to say, you know, congratulations to the leadership of Satellite Beach in Brevard County for doing what you have done for PACE so far. I'm actually a local, so I live in Grant Valkaria. So you will see and hear more of me kind of as our program develops. So I just want to say congratulations for considering this and use me and count on me as a resource moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question, though? If we were to approach the county, if they did this, would every city within the county also be under that statute if it's countywide?
Right. It works both ways. In Broward County, they have an opt-out. So the cities essentially-
Right, we have that, yeah.
So they could opt out of it. In other counties, there's an opt-in where the city would have to choose whether or not they want to be a part of it. Being very candid with you, I think you got a little bit of time, you know, before you have to worry about that with Brevard County, although it will happen, you know, at some point in the future.
Well, I don't, it wouldn't be a worry for us. It'd be good if they did this for countywide, but I think, that's why I was going to ask you, like, would it be advantageous if we wanted to get everyone on board just to go to the county instead of go to individual cities?
I think that the strategy among the PACE providers at this point is to go city by city, but eventually we will continue to make the case to the county.
Okay. Great, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Public comment portion is still open on Agenda Item 9. Here are no further public comment. Back to council. Any further counsel? Lenore?
I was just going to say, you know, we kind of set the standard for what happens in Brevard County. We've been a forward-thinking city for all the time that I've lived here, and it's 32 years. And there's been people way before me that were far more forward-thinking than I am. But, you know, I would say, there's already talk at Space Coast League of Cities meetings of other cities that are looking to do some of the things we're doing. So I see that as a plus. And Frank can tell you, you know, even with the Sustainability Board, the calls that he gets from other cities, so. Thanks.
Any further? Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you very much. Staff, thank you. At this time, moving on to Agenda Item 10 and discuss, take action on ordinance 1136. Jim?
Ordinance number 1136. An ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, establishing a temporary moratorium on growing, cultivating, processing, manufacturing, dispensing, distributing, bartering, and wholesale and retail sale of medical cannabis, low THC cannabis, and derivative products, or any related activities. Establishing a temporary moratorium until November 30, 2017, on the locating, opening, relocating, or expansion of any medical marijuana dispensing facility within the city. Directing staff to develop proposed land development regulations and other recommendations regarding such cannabis-related activities. Providing for penalties, providing for severability, providing for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, and providing an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance number 1136.
Thank you very much. Courtney?
I think it really speaks for itself. We really don't want to permit a dispensary and then have, they have to close down when the state creates those, basically. So the state has nine months within the text of the amendment to create guidelines for the dispensaries and how they will be regulated throughout the state of Florida. So it would be probably a little unfair and not such a good idea for the business owner, for us to permit things that may have to change and would be inconsistent with state law later. So it would be our recommendation to just set the moratorium so we don't have to go through that and then we'll create the regulations at the time the state does.
Thank you very much. Questions from council?
Yeah, I don't know how many of you get the Florida League of Cities clips. You know, they come every day. I get them. In fact, I've gotten Lenore and Courtney on them now. We're not the only city doing this. Pretty much on a daily basis, there are three to four cities that are doing exactly this scenario. So-
And we've already gotten inquiries from residents, you know, from business owners that are asking what our rules are, where they can be located. And, you know, I'd hate to have them invest that and spend the money and do all that and then turn around and it not be applicable with state law and us having to, you know, to come back and say, sorry, you got a moment?
So state law came in in June. Did we come back and revisit it in June when that, or?
Well, also, the state is notoriously late on everything they do, so they, you know, sometimes they don't comply with their own rules. So if they actually do those regulations by then, I'd be surprised.
And plus, we would still have to run it through whatever board now we create with P&amp;Z and Com.
So I see it's implementing in a year or so.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1136 on first reading.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Further discussion from council?
I just add, I agree with Courtney. If we didn't do this and a business did come in and we let that happen and then the state came back and said, no, you can't do that, it wouldn't be the state that looked like the bad guy. We would look like the bad guy. So I think from a preventative point of view, it probably is better to do this again because, you know, the perception would be, well, why did you let us do that? And, you know, now you're kicking us out after you let us in, even though we could legally say, well, it was state that did that. But again, the local perception is we did that. So I agree with this. It's probably a better reason from our point, let's not get anything started before we know what all the rules are.
Thank you. This time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 10.
I'll be short, Mr. Chairman. The camel's nose is under the tent. We need to keep it out, is what I'm concerned. When I was in Vietnam, I saw the devastation that drugs can do to people. And it all started out, could have been marijuana. I could buy a joint for a dime, good quality joint for a dime. I never did because I was always afraid of getting addicted. They say, oh, it's not addictive. As far as I'm concerned, it's poor because I've seen what it does. Don't let the camel get into the tents, gentlemen and lady. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment portion for Agenda Item 10 still open. Here are no further. Bring it back to-
Mayor, I just want to clarify, though. This is a moratorium until state law comes to pass. And then we will have to allow them to locate in the city completely, as long as it complies with state law. So that bus is already, you know, that ship's already sailed. The vote is already done. So I don't want people to think that we're outlawing it forever. It's just for the period of time until the state comes back and creates those rules.
Thank you. Any further public? Bring it back to council. Any further counsel? I know I've talked to Courtney on this one, the day it passed. So just to make sure we did this, because I remember on the adult entertainment how we got kind of hung there a little bit. So, great. Okay, thank you. Any further? Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, which is the proposed agenda for our next meeting. As we always do in the past, if you have anything you would like on, please see city manager.
I forwarded to Courtney and Lenore the resolution that we passed at the Space Coast League of Cities that had regards to Susan Haney being on the governor. That's going to be coming through.
Okay. Okay. Again, just, you know, get your information to Courtney if you need something on here. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the workshop minutes from January 4th, 2017, and the city council regular meeting minutes from January 4th, 2017, as submitted.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Osmer, second by Councilman Gibson. Any discussion on the minutes? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passes. Any further business before council? To the staff, thank you very much for everything.